I'd like to call this meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Ms. Donan McDowell?
Thank you, I'm not a pastor but I'm a grateful citizen and I'd be very happy to pray for you tonight. Father God, thank you so much that you care about the city. Thank you for giving us men and women who also care about our city and we pray that you would just fill them with wisdom, help their decisions to be made wisely, being guided by you. We pray also for us as citizens that we would do our very best to live to honor you and to honor each other and to respect each other. I thank you so much for the decisions that would be made tonight and we ask that you would be with Mayor Hill and with each of the commissioners that they would certainly make wise decisions tonight. Protect our city tonight too, Father, our officers and our citizens. We pray that tonight your hand would just be the protecting force over them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on with the agenda, I would like to just inform everybody that there's going to be a public hearing tonight and if you wish to speak during the public hearing, I would ask that you sign in on the public hearing sheet in the back and also let you know that you will be sworn in and that's it. So please sign in if you are so inclined. Item number four is agenda changes. Do the commissioners have any agenda changes? I would like to have an agenda change to delete item number 18. I apologize to the commissioners for this. I hope to have this completed but we'll have it ready in two weeks. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as changed?
So, a second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five on the agenda is public hearing, TIF, Sheridan Road Route 173 redevelopment project area. I hereby declare the -- is there a motion? Do you need a motion to this? Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
There's no move.
A motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. The first item on the agenda for the public hearing is a summary of public notices and conformances to TIF Act and we have Bob Richlicky and Phil McKenney here from the firm of Kane McKenna to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Bob Richlicky with Kane McKenna. I just want to point out, as it relates to that item, Mr. Mayor, prior to this public hearing, the city has conformed with the requirements of the TIF Act. There were several series of notices that had gone out, both worked on by Kane McKenna as well as the city staff. There were notices to residential addresses within 750 feet of the boundaries of the TIF that went on -- that went out early on. There were also notices sent to the state of Illinois as well as the affected taxing districts and there was a joint review board meeting that was held in consultation as it relates to this plan. And then last but not least, there were notices sent to all taxpayers of record within the proposed district boundaries and there were two newspaper notices published as well. So upon conclusion of all these notices, I'm here to report that the city has conformed with the requirements of the TIF Act and has complied with the requirements as it related to public notice for this hearing. If, from the standpoint of the next steps, Mr. Mayor, we did have a presentation. I think it was passed out to everyone. We're going to go over this. It's more of an overview. If you're okay with that, we'll go ahead with the presentation.
Just have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So, a joint review board met?
Yeah, we met. There were two meetings, it was continued, and the joint review board meeting, which consisted of your affected taxing districts.
So all the taxing bodies were represented at that joint review board?
At that joint review board meeting. Actually, there were seven districts as well as a public member who was in attendance at both of the meetings and the board did vote. There was a positive recommendation, majority vote occurred in order to recommend to the city council in order to move forward with the designation of the TIF district.
Okay, so that board met and approved this TIF district?
Correct, on a majority vote.
And the representation on that board was all of the taxing bodies?
Mm-hmm.
Including a public representative?
A public member, right, right. So the taxing districts did have the opportunity to review the materials, of which we're going to summarize today, and follow up or ask any questions as it related to the city staff as well as Kane McKenna.
Thanks. If we could, we have an agenda here.
Yes.
I'd like to follow exactly along the agenda if we could.
Sure, sure.
And the next item on this agenda is report of joint review board and I would ask Director Nabel to report on the joint review board, please.
Thank you. Mr. Richlicky, you touched on that a bit. There were eight voting members at the joint review board and it was a five to three recommendation to approve the TIF as it was presented or to make the recommendation to council proceed. One minor correction, I don't believe all of the taxing bodies were represented. There were like the Forest Preserve, there were a couple of the smaller taxing bodies which typically don't show up but if I recall the act correct, whoever is present is the joint review board but they were all given notification to attend, an opportunity to attend. So there were seven taxing bodies and a public member at that and the recommendation to council was to proceed with the TIF.
Right. Okay, thank you. Item number four is the introduction of written comments. City clerk, have we received any written comments on the -- there have not been any written comments. So we will move to item number five is the TIF overview and summary of the TIF plan.
Now, yeah, now we're in order.
Now we're in order.
Now we're in order. I think again, there was a presentation that was passed out to the members of the public as well as to the city council and what we like to do is kind of walk through that. There's, you know, page numbers to the right-hand corner of the slides and on number two, you'll see that there's an overview. We're going to talk a little bit about the background of the proposed area, how it qualified under Illinois law, some of the key elements of the TIF plan and we're just going to touch upon that as a summary. The actual document itself with the exhibits is around 60 pages or so, so we're going to cover only the high points. And then lastly, we're going to go over where we are in terms of the process and what some of the next steps are, would be for the city council. Slide three takes off as it relates to some background. Again, you know, this area is located north of your existing downtown TIF district, which is scheduled to expire this year. The purpose of the TIF and in conformance with your comprehensive plan is to continue for the Sheridan Road as well as for the 173 corridor to illicit development or redevelopment for that area and to increase tax base as well as jobs within the community. Because of the location along Sheridan Road, it was believed that, again, from a standpoint of a planning approach to this and an economic development approach, this is the next area as it relates to unfinished business regarding the Sheridan Road corridor. On slide four, we have a representation of the map of the TIF district. You can see it is essentially the frontage properties that are along Sheridan Road starting at 24th Street on the south going up to the city boundaries on the north. We do extend out a little further west on Route 173 or 21st Avenue in order to include the Jewel and some of the larger retail uses. But again, the primary focus here would be retail, commercial, as well as some potential for mixed uses. There's some larger lots, empty lots to the north that would have the capability for redevelopment and the other part of the focus of the plan would be on business retention as well as expansion for some of the uses that are already there and to continue, again, whether it's sales tax or job growth or property tax growth, continue economic development and job growth within this area. Slide five touches on why TIF is important. Again, the city has had success in the past with several of its TIF districts in terms of growth and equalized assessed valuation and investment within the city and I believe, you know, since the conclusion of the Great Recession, real estate tax, in particular, real estate tax decisions, investment decisions, are impacted greatly by property tax burden about the investment decision relates to the ability to overcome area impediments, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's assembly of properties, whether it's things as it relates to off-site detention or onsite detention. The ability to address these constraints is important. That's where the TIF comes in. The TIF is added possibility in terms of either whether it's an incentive or enhancement to improve the investment decision within the community. And again, you do face competition, not only from other neighboring communities within Illinois but also to the north. There are differences in tax structure, there's differences as it relates to competitiveness that the TIF will -- I mean, you have other things to utilize in terms of your entitlement zoning process. The TIF is another tool or element in your toolbox in order to address the ability to improve investment decisions within the city of Zion. And slide six, you know, from a standpoint of why this area of the TIF, again, the TIF has to conform with your comprehensive plan, so it's basically not implemented within a vacuum. It does that. It exceeds an acre and a half and it also ties into this, what they call the but-for requirement, that the TIF is in the city's belief and best undertakings going to be important as it relates to improving and attracting private investment within the community. Number seven, page seven, indicates that, and we want to stress this point, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, TIF is not a new tax. Properties within the TIF district, properties outside of the TIF district are assessed equally. The same assessment procedures are applied to properties regardless of their location. Secondly, the same tax rate is extended against these properties. What this slide tries to identify is, you know, the mechanics of TIF, how does it work? Essentially, if you go to the next page, there's a straight line. That straight line is often referred to as the frozen equalized assessed valuation or the base equalized assessed valuation. Once the city makes a determination that the TIF is in play, the county clerk's office will set what they call the base equalized assessed valuation. Let's say that's $100,000. Because of redevelopment, whether in expansion or a new building is built, that line, as you see here, will begin to go up because the valuation goes up. Again, uniform assessment, it's just that there's an increase over the base. Uniform taxation, there's same tax rate is applied. However, the taxes are split, as you see on the previous slide, between the base and the new value. So if the taxes rose by $10,000 because of an expansion, properties are paying $110,000 in taxes, again, whether they're in the TIF or outside of the TIF. That extra $10,000 though, which is called the increment, is utilized within a special TIF fund that the city manages. You have an independent audit of that fund, you prepare an annual report of that fund which you submit to the state and those funds can only be spent within that boundary, that map that we saw early on. So from the standpoint of utilization, there are tax revenues that are bifurcated or split, same tax revenues, again, whether you're in or out of the TIF but just as that line increases because of new valuation due to the benefit of the TIF, whether it's infrastructure or incentives that you give, similar again to what you've done with your other TIF districts, those funds are spent within the TIF district only and that's over a period of up to 23 years.
Can we ask questions at this point? Or if the EAV goes up as a result of the new development going in, are taxing bodies able to levy based on that new EAV?
They, no, the levy is based on whatever EAV is outside of that TIF district. So that base, that flat line, I mean, if the base EAV was $100,000, the levy, their levy is the levy is the levy. It's the extension. The extension is only applied against the EAV that's outside of the TIF district. Did Dan answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. And again, the levy is not impacted.
Only the value outside of the TIF district plus the original value?
Plus the, that base, that's correct, Mayor, plus that base value. And at the end of the day, the promise of the TIF, the premise of the TIF, similar to the TIF you have now in the downtown is that you've made or allowed for that line to go up and at the end of the TIF term, when you turn the keys to the car over, turn the valuation over, the other taxing districts are then, as well as yourselves, are beneficiaries with that increase as a result of the economic development efforts for that 23-year period. That's the premise really of TIF, that because of the TIF, we're in a situation, you could see, we're going to get into this a little further, that the value has been going down. And again, the value's been going down in the TIF as well as in the city as a whole but the idea is that you're going to focus your efforts within that area and try to turn, you know, turn the trend around. Slide nine indicates the background to the TIF plan further. Again, it's a plan. It's in play for 23 years, it's going to have flexibility built into it. It doesn't short-circuit any of your other planning or entitlement processes. Everything has to still go through the city council. The expenditure of funds within the TIF, again, still coming through the city council. It's just the idea that you have an umbrella for what are the policy decisions within that TIF district. That's the purpose of the plan. Now, if you go to number 10, page 10, you know, why this area? Again, you know, it's usually a two-part formula. It's that the city believes, and we went over this in some of the prior slides, that the area has potential for redevelopment and again, your planning, reviews of the downtown and the area north of the downtown have indicated that this is an important, because of its location, because of the uses that are there currently, it's an important generator for the city, not only for valuation, sales taxes, but also for jobs. So in order to qualify, you have to have criteria. There's certain criteria in the TIF Act. In this case, it's qualifying as what's called a conservation area. So it's an area that by definition, it's not blighted yet but because of the character of buildings, in this case, it's mainly older buildings, more than 50% of the buildings are over 35 years old or greater. This area meets the threshold factor and then secondly, you have to have three out of 13 factors. If you turn the page, there's the 13 TIF factors. In our situation, we passed the threshold, 50% or more of the buildings are 35 years old or greater and then we have five out of the 13 factors that are present. Again, you only need three. And again, from the standpoint of TIF law, you know, this is not an unusual situation. TIF, this conservation area finding, some would argue that it was put in place really for older commercial areas, older downtown areas, areas that face competitive pressures from either newer developments or larger footprints that are competitive in terms of some of the newer retailers or newer uses. The conservation area helps for the older areas, infill areas, in order to address redevelopment. You could see by the map, really, we're not talking deep parcels here. Most of these parcels along the frontage are about 125 foot deep with the exception of as we go on 173 West where the Jewel is, you have some larger footprints. But again, here, this is more of an infill, local redevelopment effort which is tailored to the smaller lots and more diverse uses within the area. Page 12 and some of the pages thereafter, we're going to highlight some of these. You know, there's the factor of declining or lagging EAV. You know, this one is basically a math test. Under the TIF Act, for three out of five years, you have to either show a decline in EAV or a decline under the CPI. In this case, we have two of them. For four years out of the last five, we've recorded a decline in the EAV in the area and it's also been below that of the CPI. So this factor is present, again, pursuant to the requirements of the TIF Act. Second factor we found was obsolescence and again, each and every, I want to point out, each and every property within the TIF doesn't have to qualify. It's really an area-wide finding. This relates to the age of the buildings. As I said, you know, more than 50% are 35 years old or greater. You know, there are some single-family homes within the area that are 60, 70 years old, you know, in terms of their location along the, and they're between some of the commercial uses and then some of the buildings in terms of either vacancy or under utilization based on valuation or age. You know, this contributes to the finding of obsolescence within the area. Slide 14, delatarius land use or layout, in this case, it's more delatarius layout. And again, this is more of a function of, and you can see this. If you compare, for example, some of this area to the area south of 24th Street, we have a lot of varying setbacks here, buildings on lots, different parking requirements, different access and egress. It's not as uniform, let's say, as some of the areas in the downtown proper. And again, part of this has to do with when it was developed and the ages of the buildings. So the next factor we have is deterioration and this was found mainly in some of the parking or site improvements although some of the buildings did record conditions of deterioration and again, we found over 60% of the parcels, the actual parcels themselves, recorded this factor. Last factor we found was lack of community planning. And again, this is not an unusual factor for older commercial areas, older downtown areas, you know, which had a design or development in piecemeal and basically, in this case, most of the property developed before the city's first real comprehensive plan in '92. So they basically, where we found, along with city staff, that this factor was present as it related to the requirements of the TIF Act. So in summary, threshold factor, 50% or more of the buildings 35 years old or greater, we made that case and then you have to have a minimum of three factors out of the 13 identified. The TIF plan and eligibility report identified five that were in place. Slide 17 talks a little bit about the plan. To go back to the mayor's point earlier about the base, the base in this case would be, if the 2015 EAV was utilized, it'd be $5,006,000. Most likely, by the time the city council comes into consideration of this plan, we would have the 2016 EAV, which would be a little larger. I think Dave, we're hearing that it's anywhere from eight to nine percent higher. So, but it's whatever is in place at the time. The county clerk would make that decision, not the city of Zion but most likely, the base would be at the higher benchmark rather than at the 2015 benchmark. The projected EAV, again, it's based on market assumptions at this time, assuming it could be anywhere from $15,000 to $17,000, but again, that all depends on the economic development program of the city and the acceptance of the marketplace by what you guys are planning in terms of the TIF. The budget, that's set. The next page identifies that's up to $17,000,000. You do have flexibility, remember, this is over a 23-year period. You can reallocate some of these items but this is the top end as it relates to how you would spend the money or where you would spend the money within the TIF district. Anything over this amount would require an amendment to the TIF plan, you'd have to go back to the districts. This is kind of your expectation of what the city would need in order to accomplish redevelopment in the area. So where we are in the process, if you jump to the last slide, no action would be taken tonight by the city council. You're here to listen as it relates to any input from the general public or the taxing districts to the plan. You have to wait a minimum of 14 days but no more than 90 days to consider the three ordinances. Those three ordinances were also reviewed conceptually with the taxing districts at the joint review board meeting. So at this point, again, we're going to conclude our presentation. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to try to answer them but that's where we are in the process. Again, the public hearing is primarily to entertain comments and no action would be taken. You have this cooling off period, let's say up to two weeks, in which to process that information and then make a decision to move forward.
Are there any questions, commissioners? Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comments and discussion and I would like to start by indicating that each individual that would like to speak will have three minutes to speak for public testimony and comment. I'll ask all speakers, when they come up, please come up to the podium and please state your name and address and I would ask that, if there are a number of speakers, I would ask that you avoid repetition and remind the public that all information presented is under oath. Each speaker will be allowed to speak one time unless there is, you're asked to participate in the discussion that we're having up here. Is there any, with those people that wish to speak at the public hearing, please stand and take an oath. Please raise your right hand. And it's aye and state your name for the record.
I'll swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Just say aye.
I do.
Thank you. We're good.
Thank you.
You're good.
The first person on the list is Becky Allard.
My name is Rebecca Allard, Becky for short, and I'm the interim business manager in Zion Elementary School District 6 and I'm here tonight to share a few comments about the proposed TIF 4. The District 6 Board of Education understands that the use of tax increment financing is a widely used method to improve areas within any community and ultimately will benefit all the citizens of those communities. Although in theory, a TIF district should not harm anyone, each and every taxing body will experience an adverse financial impact over the length of the TIF currently being recommended for 23 years. The city has the right to enter into a TIF agreement but District 6 has some concerns about the city creating another TIF. The TIF, as a result, by its very nature is, will freeze our EAVs as Mr. Richlicky stated in his comments and any increase that the district would be entitled to, as Mr. McDonald asked in his question, we will not receive those incremental increases in our, for the taxes in the TIF area for over a period of 23 years. And as, again, all the taxpayers outside of the TIF area will pay for any increase that District 6 may be entitled to. We can't talk about shortage of revenues in a school district today without making comment about Springfield and the lack of their ability to adopt a budget over the past several years. School funding is, schools are dependent on Springfield for school funding and local property taxes and unfortunately, local property taxes are the only reliable source of revenue the school districts have at this time. You know, Zion Elementary School District 6 serves the youngest population in your community, the students who tend, attend our preschool program all the way through grade eight. And it's unfortunate but it's true, any action taken by a taxing body to implement a TIF will ultimately limit District 6's financial resources and affect those children that we all, everybody, care so much about. We would encourage the city to consider a shorter TIF, if that's on the table, or enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the school districts in the community to share some of those resources that may be available during that 23 period or whatever the length of the TIF may be. I have worked in multiple school districts who have entered into such agreements with other villages and/or municipalities and they have helped each. The coming together and working together allowed the district to receive not the entire resources they may be entitled to under property tax but they will receive, could receive dollars that could, again, help our children and that's what we're all here for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Audrey Little.
Thank you. Audrey Little, I'm the chief school business official for Zion Benton High School. I've given Mr. Nabel copies of, written copies for each of you of the statement the board asked me to read on their behalf tonight regarding their concerns with the newly proposed TIF. Although we acknowledge the newly created TIF 4 technically meets the letter of the law relating to the formation of TIF districts, District 126 has serious concerns regarding the ramifications of creating another TIF district. the ramifications of creating another TIF district for 23 years. As you know, TIF districts freeze the EAV of certain properties that contribute to the taxing bodies, including the school districts, for the length of the TIF. As a result of the frozen EAV value, even the most minimal legally allowable property tax increase during the term of the TIF must be spread over the remaining non-TIF properties. During the 23-year term of the TIF, the school district's expenses will continue to increase. Compare salaries, benefits, utility costs, or other costs of anything today to the cost 23 years ago, that was 1994. And it's easy to see why the school districts are unable to simply forego collecting the increase during this time. Consider that a student starting in kindergarten this fall will turn 29 years old when this TIF expires. District 126 is mandated by law to comply with the state rules governing public school districts, and we must do so in a state that has one of the worst rankings in the country for funding public education. Therefore, school districts are forced to rely heavily on local property taxes. The tax burden is a significant concern for our community, and District 126 has sought to provide relief by abating $1.3 million over a two-year period. Unfortunately, TIF districts make these efforts even more difficult. Even a minimal tax extension increase, such as the seven tenths of 1% increase that school districts were allowed to collect this year, ends up equating to a larger increase for non-TIF properties that now must absorb the TIF properties portion of the increase. What is even more difficult for the high school district is that our boundary covers several taxing bodies. As a result, we have several TIF districts in multiple municipalities. This compounds the problem by redistributing the tax burden across multiple boundaries within District 126. This newest proposed TIF includes properties that are newer and in great condition, such as Applebee's Restaurant and the Walgreens Store. We understand that these properties need to be included to maintain a contiguous boundary for the TIF, but these are commercial properties that can help alleviate the tax burden for the homeowners. By including businesses like these in the TIF for 23 years, the city is creating a situation where the responsibility for any of these businesses' increased share of property taxes must be paid by other property owners, which in Zion is typically homeowners. I have two other paragraphs, but I'll honor my time.
Go ahead, finish up.
Thank you. The district certainly understands the need for and the usefulness of creating a TIF district. We also understand and acknowledge the potential positive impact the TIF can have on the EAV at the end of the 23-year period. The concern is the tax burden for the rest of the community during the 23-year period, especially considering most of the TIF is commercial property and considering that the EAV has just begun to rise in Zion. This means that the taxing bodies who have had to navigate the negative impact of falling EAV over the last eight years will not be able to experience the relief from the recovery that has just begun in Zion. We acknowledge that for certain areas in shorter periods of time, it makes economic sense to create a TIF. However, we would respectfully urge the commissioners and the mayor to consider at minimum the term of this newly proposed TIF due to the negative impact it will have on the property taxes of our homeowners who are already struggling with their tax burden. We would encourage the commissioners to either consider a shorter term for the TIF or to consider an intergovernmental agreement with the school districts to provide a portion of the TIF revenue back to the school districts on an annual basis. Thank you for your consideration.
Did you say you were going to give us a copy of that?
Mr. Nabel has copies for each of you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Lance Senni with Senni Tile and Carpet, 2770 Sheridan Road, and also CNA Self-Storage at 2240 Sheridan Road. Very interesting what the two ladies had to say. I get it, what they're worried about. I guess when they're talking about tax increases and, you know, stress on the homeowners and stuff like that, I can appreciate that. I'm a homeowner, not necessarily in Zion, but I have commercial property here. I don't think that anybody that has a home has experienced the increase in taxes that I have at 2240 Sheridan Road. From about 10 years, it went from 13.5 to like 36,000. Now, I don't think any homeowners experienced that. That's the negative part. Now, the positive part is, is that I've been basically involved in TIFs here in Zion. One of the reasons I'm still here is because I got a TIF. One of the reasons why I'm here at all period was that I was pretty much, I had a real estate agent contact me one day when they were having the facade program and said it was a great deal and something you really should consider, Zion was really moving up at that time. I looked at it, it was a great, it was a great opportunity, and I took advantage of it. And I think it was a symbiotic relationship between the city and my business. I think we partnered well with it. I think it was money well spent. I've been here for, I think, 14 years now. I wouldn't have been here at all otherwise. I think that the money was spent wisely. I think anybody that's been into our store or our facility, with the storage facility, they're state-of-the-art, they're well-kept. That's just all part of, the TIF did bring that to the city. My taxes obviously go up like everybody else's do. I think Zion actually, as a city, probably gets the least amount of the increase compared to the schools do proportionately. I don't know for sure what my portion of taxes are to the school district, but I think it's in excess of 60 to 65%. That's a significant amount. Trying to attract some businesses to keep the downtown areas viable, inhabited, when you drive down, you don't see a dead town, that's important. That's important for everyone. That's important for the people that live in town that pay their home taxes. That's important for everybody. At one time, we were selling, and we actually are, have one of the businesses up for sale, and one of the big things that, the negative on it was, is that the guy looked me straight in the eye and says, "You know, your taxes went up 14% last year?" Now, just so you guys know, anybody that has a business, and I realize schools are not businesses, you know, but businesses are businesses. They try to survive. So, when we experienced a 14% increase, I cannot pass that along to one of my runners. You just can't. So, just something to think, I, I'm living proof that they work. I've appreciated all the help, and again, the partnership with the city. I think that the TIFs are viable. I think they're important. You know, and do we want to work with the schools? Absolutely. I mean, we want our children to be educated properly and have all the tools to do it, but I guess there's a reasonable amount, and we have to be reasonable about everything. But I hope that shed some light on it. I appreciated the TIF and, like I said, the partnership that I have with the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Clyde Macklemore.
Good evening, council. I don't want to be repetitious, but I do want to say this here, at this time and age that in our state, our governor's not giving the money back to the schools. I mean, the schools are overdue. I'm sorry, you pay 65% of your taxes, go to the school. But if our children don't get their education, the families, when people move to a town, what they do is they look for who's got the best schools. That's how people move to a town. And if our schools don't get any better, it's going to be a ghost town. Now, we might have a lot of businesses, but people are not going to live here. So, I'm, don't want to be repetitious, I'm not going to hold you hostage. I want to agree with the teachers, District 6 and 126 on asking you, can you shorten? Believe me, I want businesses to come in Zion, believe me. I might be, I, I want businesses to come. We need jobs, we need people to come in here. So, all I'm asking is, can you shorten it a little bit? Right at this time and age, with the governor acting, you know, what's going on in Springfield? I ain't going to say how he's acting, might be good or bad, but he ain't giving up no money to, just, you know, he's not paying the bills up there. But until they get that together, can y'all shorten this? I mean, I want businesses in Zion. I welcome businesses in Zion, long as they go hire Zion residents. But if businesses come and the people are not living here, they ain't going to have no residents to hire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Ratliff.
Thank you. David Ratliff, 2017 Gilead, and I also own a business downtown at 2636 Sheridan Road, The Hive. Tomorrow's our one-year anniversary, and I have to tell you, we would not be where we are if it was not for a TIF. When we looked into doing this, we looked at doing it elsewhere other than Zion due to the taxes. And I said to my wife, unless we're going to sell our home and get out of these high taxes from the home, we're going to open it right here in Zion. We did that, we looked around, we looked at a vacant property at 2636 Sheridan Road, and he wanted $4,000 a month for rent. The property had been more unused in the past four years, meaning he was paying half the property taxes for that location. Because of the TIF and because of the ADA requirements, building bathrooms, doing such, we were able to secure a TIF grant. We begged, borrowed, and steals with our homes, we went to our parents and begged for money, we did everything we possibly could, and we are lucky enough, because of the TIF, we purchased the building and we got it back on the tax rolls. We put more than $50,000, much more than $50,000 into that building. Our taxes now reflect that, and again, we've hired five people. This is an ongoing, I'm not going anywhere. I purchased my home, I purchased my business. I'm not leaving the city of Zion, I'm here forever. So, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys, the TIF is phenomenal, and we could not be here without it. So, thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Hi, everybody. My name is Ted Beal, and I'm the owner of Ente's Restaurant. I don't know if everybody knows Ente's Restaurant, but we're over there on Sheridan Road, you know? Yeah, what is it, 3077 Sheridan? And it used to be called The Old Rook's Place, okay? So, once they left, you know, the city did try to get other people to go in there and help them out, but nobody seemed to be able to do it. Now, we've been in town since 93, and we bought the place called the Zion Restaurant out of my own pocket, nobody helped us. And then, you know, we thought we'd make a move to a bigger building and a nicer location, which was just across the street, and it was in the, called the Shiloh Mall. Well, at that time, it wasn't too bad, but then it got kind of shattered, and things started happening. And the landlord that we had didn't seem to want to cooperate much with us. And then, you know, you can only be grandfathered for so long. Now, all the equipment that was in there, I updated it the best I could, but then there was these things called the hood and fire suppression system, and these things are very expensive, okay? And all this stuff was going to be put on me to purchase it. Well, since 93, like I said, everything had been out of my pocket, and all I did was put out money. You know, I used to have a good job with Commonwealth Edison. Well, you know, you get kind of old and you're kind of retired a little bit, you know? So, that's what happened to me, but actually, I got hurt, I got out earlier, but in any event, we stayed in this building in Shiloh Mall from 96 to 2016. And that was only because I was working so long, for two years it took, two years it took, working with the city, with the TIF grant, to move into the Old Rook's Place, which we now call Ente's. Now, we wouldn't have been able to do that, believe me, because, you know, the banks are really tight with money, you know? I mean, they just don't want to give it to, especially restaurant people. I mean, I know that restaurants are really, you know, what is it, 10% of them go out within the first year, or 90%, something like that? But, you know, when you prove that you can do a business for over 20 years, you know, you know, you give a guy a break, well, the city did. And if it wasn't for the TIF, I wouldn't have been here today either. They helped us a lot, but same token, we put a lot of our own thing into it, and we're working hard to keep it going, you know? And the taxes have increased some since last year, but, you know, we also live in Zion, you know, and our taxes run up a little bit on the house as well, but that's the way it goes. So, you know, I just want to say thank you to the city for giving us the break. And, you know, certain things work with the TIF and some things don't. It's just certain, certain spots you put it, like, I don't disagree with anything about the schools, you know, it's got to help the schools. My kids grew up in Round Lake, it was great over there, but, no, that was over there. Then we come here. But anyway, I just want to thank the city, and the TIF does work, but the people that you go in through the grant with, like Dave over here, we work hard to keep it working, okay? And that's how, it all has to work together. That's basically all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions that the commissioners have? I don't have any questions, no. I have a question. Is it, I don't know if this is for Kane McKenna, if this is for Director Nabel. What are the ramifications of squeezing the time from 23 years to 20 or 23 years to 18? What impact does that have on the TIF if we would decide to do that or consider that?
I can answer that. The primary impact is entering into contracts with potential developers. Now, at the beginning, it's not as large of an impact because you still have, let's say, 17 years to either repay that incentive agreement or get that increment going to basically fund the project. But let's say you're 10 years into the TIF, you have a project come along, and you have seven years left. Well, if it's a large project that needs a certain amount of increment or incentive to make it work, you have to now do that over a seven-year period rather than potentially a 13. You may not generate enough in that seven-year period remaining in the TIF to be able to make the project feasible, and you may lose the project at that time. Additionally, if you're doing bond issues with, where your pledging tax or increment revenues for infrastructure, things like that, typically those are 20-year bonds. So, you limit your prospects there. The act was basically set up for 23 years to say you get a couple of years going, and then you have a 20-year cycle for the activity to happen. So, it's hard to say what the ramifications are because you don't know what might be coming down the road. You know, there's always, there's always opportunities to adopt a shorter period and then have the joint review board and the council extend it at a later time, but the max is pretty, pretty much the standard because it gives you the most flexibility over the long term to, gives you your best chance of succeeding.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Go ahead. If we, if we didn't develop a TIF district, what would be the likelihood of new development coming into that area, or is there another approach for development in that area?
The tools that we have, as Mr. Rich List said, this gives another large tool to try and attract businesses. The tools that we have are pretty minimal to attract businesses, especially when we have Wisconsin so close. We've already lost a lot of potential development to Wisconsin. They're utilizing TIF districts as well to, just to try and even stay competitive with that. We're just trying to level the playing field to match what they have without some of these other challenges that we have, we've already had in hot taxes. So, I would say the chances are pretty low because we've already seen that business outside of TIF districts, there hasn't been a ton of new business over the past years that has been in the TIF districts, or it's been brought in with other sales tax incentives and things like that that are available.
I know there's some legislation being proposed in Springfield to try to bring some relief to schools on school funding reform.
relief to schools on school funding reform. But if we're 15 years into the TIF and those reforms don't take place or don't bring any relief to the schools, is it possible to allocate any TIF funds to the schools at a later date?
Um...
I don't know, maybe it's our TIF.
It is possible. I mean, if you look at your budget, you're already, there's already surplus requirements built into the act, and again, that's dependent on whether, you know, realistically, surplus does not happen a lot in TIFs, I'll be honest about that. But there's provisions to allow that, and especially if we're creeping up on our budget, like Kane McKenna said, you can't exceed the TIF budget. So, if we're super successful early on and we get everything going, you can either close the TIF out early, or you can declare surpluses to, or enter into agreements at a future time to address that.
Okay. Thanks.
I've got another question. And I guess, I think, I'm not sure who this, I think I'm gonna ask you guys. We've applied for enterprise zone designation, and if we get that, how strong of a tool is enterprise zone along with a TIF district?
Right now, under current law, there's this thing called the LEACH Amendment. It doesn't allow you to double-dip on property tax incentives. That's if it still stays in play. So basically, if you're going to do an abatement under the enterprise zone, it would forbid you from doing a property tax incentive with the TIF. You would have to pick your poison. Now, with respect to the other enterprise zone incentives, like the sales tax rebate, any of the edge credits or directional credits, you're good. And those things actually enhance, I mean, communities have been able to, like I said earlier, it's another tool in your toolbox, except for on the property tax side. Under the current structure, the state forces you on property tax to choose one or the other as a, if you're gonna use it as a property tax, as an incentive, you would have to either use, as we understand it, you would either have to use the TIF, and then you would not be able to use the property tax abatement, or you would use the property tax abatement under the enterprise zone, but not the TIF incentive.
Okay. Can't do both?
Can't do both.
Just on property tax?
Just on property tax. The other stuff you could do, the toolbox under enterprise zone is open, however, whichever program you wanna use under the enterprise zone.
Okay. And I got one other question. You've worked with a lot of municipalities in their, doing TIF districts?
Done about 300 or so.
Both school districts mentioned an intergovernmental agreement to split revenue. Have you done that with any?
Yes. In fact...
What I'm looking for is like, how much?
That's the $64,000 question. You know, part of it has, what's complicated in this situation, Mayor, is the fact that you don't have a specific project. So as a result, you're kind of in the beauty contest with folks who are coming in, are looking for certain requirements to develop a site. Since you don't have the specifics on that, it is, in our opinion, difficult to make a commitment right now because of the fact that you don't know who's at the table yet.
Okay. Now, I guess, I mean, what's the, what formula do you use? Do you split part of the increment?
It would be splitting part of the increment.
Is it ever related to, I guess, I'm, my thought is, I understand the schools' concern about lack of increased revenue. But that district has sat stagnant for years, and I also point to Trumpet Park where the argument was the same on either limiting the years or splitting the revenue. And Trumpet Park has, the value stays the same. It doesn't go up. So, have you ever seen an agreement that says if the TIF district would go up this much, this much, and the rest of the community would not, the value would not increase, that then the schools would not get any money? But if the rest of the community did increase by, let's say, this much, and the TIF went up this much, that there would be some type of a split on the percentage of the rest of the community in relationship to the TIF increment? Did you follow that at all?
I followed it. And I just, and I wanna say that we haven't seen one exactly like that, but that's something you could consider. You could consider, you could be done. What we've seen typically are limitations or sharing based on, you know, how many years? So let's say, you know, that after 10 years or after 15 years, allow us to build up a war chest, for example. And then after that, we have some kind of percentage split. Or we'd have a percentage split as it relates to something, I mean, what you just described is something that could be worked out.
Does that have to be done prior to establishing the TIF, or can it be done after?
Either way, I'm sure they would prefer in advance, but it could be done, again, you know, the board, you know, of commissioners could make that decision after the TIF designation. It's really up to you.
Okay.
Could you just tell what happens if there's residential development?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Phil. As Phil pointed out, and I think we went over this, Mayor, at the Joint Review Board, there is a provision, there is a safety valve built into the TIF right now, that if there's a residential development that results in new kids that's within the TIF district and the city assists that project, there's a formula in the TIF Act which provides for a first distribution of X percent, 27% for the grade school, 13% for the high school, and 2% for the library, that they get some of the pain eased if there is a residential development.
There's an impact on the school.
If there's an impact on the school, and it directly is tied to new kids and based on a per capita tuition charge annual, and it's recalibrated every year, depending on the amount of kids and depending on the per capita tuition charge. So, yeah, Phil, that's right. I mean, there is, there has been some legislative relief over the years to address the impacts or the burden felt, you know, by school districts, which could be in addition or part of the plan you just described, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, commissioners?
No questions, but just Director Palangro shared this with me today, that this is today's Lake County News Sun, and the headline says Pleasant Prairie to Lure More Jobs. And they are doing another TIF district and purchasing some property from Abbott Labs. So they are moving ahead. So, something to keep in mind.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
It's moved.
A motion? In a second? Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy.
Hi.
Mr. Fisher.
Hi.
Mr. McDowell.
Hi.
Mr. McKinney.
Hi.
Mayor Gil.
Hi. I'd like to just take a short recess here, and we'll be doing special presentations after this, but it'll give the people that need, that wanna leave and don't wanna stick around for the rest of the meeting, an opportunity to leave. And I'll, we'll be back in two minutes. Okay, I'd like to get to item number six, a special presentation, and I would ask that Richard Fryerson please come forward.
Mr. Fryerson is Commissioner for a year, and I certainly do appreciate all that he's done, all that he's taught me. I kinda started mentoring him when he first came on board, and it ended up that he was mentoring me on a lot of things, so I just wanna express my appreciation to you and for your service to the community. I'm gonna give this to you, give you your name.
Okay.
I'm gonna put my glasses over here. This is the key to the city. It says key to the city, presented to Richard J. Fryerson, City Commissioner, March 15, 2016, April 30, 2017. With gratitude for your dedication to the task of furthering the development of the city of Zion, fulfilling your commitment to improving the quality of life of its residents in the city of Zion. Presented May 2nd, 2017 by Mayor Albert Hill. Yeah, Albert, thanks. Commissioner Lloyd Dene, Commissioner Billy McKinney, Commissioner Mike McDowell, and Commissioner Richard Fryerson. I just wanna say thank you for everything you've done.
Next, Commissioner. Yeah. Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, Mr. President. Richard?
Thank you.
Next, item of proclamation. Mr. Brandon Bush. Mr. Mr. Brandon. Brandon's been, well, I'll read this, so it's plain with Brandon. This is a resolution, a commendation, R-17R-25. Whereas Brandon Bush has been involved with ESTA for a total of 14 years, and has served the city of Zion as the Zion ESTA Director since January 2014, having previously served as the Assistant ESTA Director from October 2011 to December 2013. And whereas Brandon Bush has made a significant personal effort to prevent, minimize, repair, and alleviate injury or damage resulting from natural or man-made disasters in accordance with the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act. And whereas, Brandon Bush has selflessly donated countless hours to the preservation of the public health and safety of the residents of Zion through the provision of traffic control, severe weather warnings, assistance with weather-related disasters, accident scene festivals and special events, crime scenes, nuclear disaster preparedness, and other civil defense tasks too numerous to mention. And whereas, Brandon Bush, by way of his conviction in leadership, has earned the respect and admiration of the Zion city officials, the Zion Police and Fire Rescue Department personnel, and Zion citizens whom he has infinitely served with courage, dedication, and reliability, and compassion, and yet professional manner. Now therefore, be it resolved that it is the desire of the City Council of the city of Zion to recognize Brandon Bush and extend to him its humble expression of profound gratitude for his faithful and steadfast service to this Zion community. Now therefore, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the council, and a suitable copy be presented to Brandon Bush, so it may serve as a constant reminder of the invaluable contribution he has made to the city of Zion dated the 16th day of May 2017. Albert W. Hill, Mayor.
It's moved.
A motion? In a second? Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dene. Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell.
Hi.
Commissioner McKinney.
Hi.
Mayor Gil.
Hi. Item number seven is administration of oath of office. Billy McKinney, City Commissioner and Zion Township, no, just City Commissioner, or Zion Township Trustee. Okay. Would you like to come forward?
No.
He's left-handed. He is left-handed.
We all ready? I'm Billy McKinney.
I'm Billy McKinney.
Haven't been elected to the Office of Commission.
Haven't been elected to the Office of Commission.
In the City of Zion.
The City of Zion.
And the Office of Trustee in the Township of Zion.
In the Office of Trustee in the Township of Zion.
In the County of Lake.
In the County of Lake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will enforce the laws of the City of Zion.
That I will enforce the laws of the City of Zion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
According to the rest of my authority.
According to the rest of my ability.
So help me God.
So help the God.
Item number eight is, or excuse me, item, yes, item number eight is citizens' comments. Kathy Champagne.
Hi, Kathy Champagne here. Mayor Commissioners, I've been coming to council meetings for two years and I've got the idea of how you work. And it's been informative, enjoyable. And I really appreciate the transparency from Mayor Hill. And I appreciate when you take the time and explain to us what's going on. But sometimes I have difficulty hearing because of the constant mutterings and mumblings and explosions in the background. And I wonder if you would consider a sergeant-at-arms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Clyde McLemore.
Good evening, council members. I did have something to say, but I got some phone calls, emergency. I just want to say when y'all leave here, be safe. Two people have been shot in the last hour going down Twenty-Ninth Street. Lady sitting at the stoplight. I've been having phone calls. Seemed like we're going to try to work with the police and try to get this stopped right away. This is our first hot day. We, just to say, getting ready to happen. And it wasn't a black person that got shot. So this ain't no Black Lives Matter. This is my city, this is my town. So I'm asking everybody on your way home, be safe. Be safe. God bless you. I got to go.
I, yeah, I can comment on that, Mr. McLemore. I appreciate that support. We definitely need it. We did have several shots, car calls in the area of Twenty-Ninth and Giver tonight. Nobody was shot. We were very fortunate. The injury to that woman was glass in her hand.
That was all to the lady?
Thank God.
I just got another one, somebody just got shot in the alley.
I think that's what it was. But in the process of processing those scenes, one of our officers did take some gunfire himself. I don't think he was the intended target. He was next to a vehicle that was shot by a perpetrator. And that person is still on the loose and has not been caught. So we do need the support and we do need the information to come forward, who these players are.
Well, we got some people that won't talk.
Thank you. Item number nine is a consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
There's a minute of budget workshop called April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, at five P.M. A regular meeting held May second, two thousand seventeen, at seven P.M. An approval could not release post session minutes of meeting held on May second, two thousand seventeen, at seven thirty-eight P.M. Bills vouchers one-two-six-three-five-five through one-two-six-five-oh-two drawn on First Merit Bank. Total seven hundred thirty-five thousand eight hundred four dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen.
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell.
Hi.
Commissioner McKinney.
Hi.
Mayor Hill.
Hi. Item ten is consider passing ordinances as follows. Ten A is extending a special use permit for a medical cannabis cultivation center in the G One General Industrial Zoning District for property located east of Debra Avenue at twenty-eight oh-nine Damascus. Second reading per Mayor Hill. This is, you've seen this a number of times. This is the ordinance that would extend the special use permit, the length of time that the special use permit is good for. Is there a motion? We have a motion to approve?
Second.
In a second. Is there a discussion?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen.
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell.
Hi.
Commissioner McKinney.
Hi.
Mayor Hill.
Hi. Item number eleven is discussion, authorization, and approval. Eleven A is consider approval of annual preventive maintenance contract with BioTron providing for semi-annual preventive maintenance inspection on each of the three ZOL E-Series cardiac monitors and one each ZOL AED Pro per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our annual contract with BioTron is up effective June first, twenty seventeen. As you mentioned, this is for our ZOL series cardiac monitors and our AED. BioTron has been doing the maintenance on our monitors since nineteen ninety-two. And since that time, he has not increased his rate one dollar. So I respectfully request that council approve the annual maintenance contract with BioTron in the amount listed on the contract.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ZOL E-Series cardiac monitors. Maintenance that hasn't increased since nineteen ninety-two. I'd also like to hire this company for other services at the city.
One guy.
I'm not sure if this is cheap today or expensive in ninety-two. Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen.
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell.
Hi.
Commissioner McKinney.
Hi.
Mayor Hill.
Hi. Item eleven B is reconsideration of zoning dock at sixteen Z-dash-nine regarding a special use permit to operate a landscape supply transfer station and contractor parking at fourteen-ten Green Bay Road as petitioned by Fred Shaw per Director Ianson. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the April fourth, twenty seventeen council meeting, the council voted to refer dock at sixteen Z-nine back to reconsideration to the planning and zoning commission for the recommendation. Mr. Shaw has since narrowed his request for the special use permit to landscape supply, transfer station, and contractor parking only. He has eliminated semi-trucks, RVs, and boat parking in storage. At the May fourth planning and zoning commission, they voted to reconsider dock at sixteen Z-nine and approve the special use permit based on the business plan dated three-twenty-seven-seventeen.
So make a motion to approve the special use permit to operate the landscaping, supply, transfer station, and contractor parking at fourteen-ten Green Bay Road.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? You're not going to get away with that easy. Sorry, I've got a couple of questions. This has been changed. It's been modified quite a bit from what I understand. Okay. And the contractor parking, this is landscape contractors who have trucks and trailers and things like that. Is that what you're talking about?
It could be any kind of contractor. It could be a landscape contractor, it could be a paving contractor, it could be a carpentry contractor. Anybody that has a truck and a trailer that needs to park.
There was a reference in here, I believe, to forty thousand pounds?
Yeah, we're talking about.
How big of a truck gives that?
I'm not a truck driver. It's like a six-wheeler, a loaded six-wheeler.
Okay.
Below a semi.
Yeah, it's below a semi tractor-trailer.
There won't be any semi tractor-trailers, though?
No.
Okay.
Not for parking.
Yeah, not for parking at all. The only semi tractor-trailers that would be going in and out would be the eighty-yard transfer station hauling trucks. And there'd be only like two trucks a day.
Okay. It says here, Director Ianson stated that regarding the transfer station and salt storage, the IEP permitting is contingent upon approval of the special use permit. But I would also like to say that the the approval, I guess, of the transfer station and the salt storage is contingent upon IEP approval.
Yeah, we need to get the zoning first.
Right, you need to get the zoning and then IEP will look at it.
We'll consider, we'll look at us and consider us.
Okay, but if they don't approve that, then I think, can we put that in special use permit that IEP has to approve?
Yes, sure. It can be contingent on the permitting.
Okay, and can you also put forty thousand pounds in there on the truck? The organic waste leaves must be removed from the site daily as required by EPA. State if odor becomes a problem during the course of one day, would tarp the waste if necessary. Can we put that in there?
Yes.
You don't have any objections to putting this in there?
I do not.
I just want to be sure that if something different develops at a later date, like maybe you can't get tarps or whatever, we have an agreement with you that says this is what has to happen. Commissioner Fryerson asked if the site improvements we made prior to open. When I looked at your site plan, and I thought that I heard you say last, the last time you were in here, you've got a berm across the front right now.
Correct.
Is that going higher?
No, that berm across the front stays in the same height. We need to put up a new sign because the old one blew down.
Okay.
And then there's also a berm in the back.
Right, well, there's a berm in the back. I'm just concerned about the sightlines from the, from Green Bay Road. Because you can see right over the top of that berm. Would you be willing to put in some evergreen plantings along there?
Yeah, we put shrubs in. So it's one of the plans we were looking at.
Okay, can we, would you be willing to put eight to ten?
Sure.
Can we put that over there, too? Thank you. And I'm not sure I quite understand the ingress and egress for people. This says, Commissioner Fryerson asked if there were any turnouts to govern traffic. Mr. Shaw stated there was no turnouts at the time. However, traffic can only turn out going south.
We're going to force them to only go south if they're exiting because we're on the west side of the road. So we don't want them crossing over lanes of traffic.
Yeah, I get that. But I'm guessing you're not going to force anybody to do anything. People are going to get out there and are going to drive wherever they want.
Well, we'll make our lanes and put signs up and then we won't let them come back if they.
And they'll only be able to turn in coming from the north?
Correct.
Okay. So you think somebody that's like, lives in Beach Park, south of one-seventy-three?
We're more concerned with the contractors coming in.
Okay.
Especially the truck drivers.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Homeowners, we're not, we don't have that concern.
Okay, and I think that's all I have. So we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen.
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell.
Hi.
Commissioner McKinney.
Hi.
Mayor Hill.
Hi. Item eleven C is consider approval of amendment to the Illinois FOP Labor Council Telecommunicators Collective Bargaining Agreement regarding a severance agreement related to dispatch consolidation per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have in front of you a severance agreement that can be attached to the FOP contract with the telecommunications. This is in relation to severance from employment for City of Zion related to the E-nine-one-one dispatch consolidation. And the agreement terms are all specified in there and be effective for anyone that stays on through the date of consolidation and switch over to Gurnee.
Just for the public's information, I'm sure you're all, many of you are aware that we're consolidating our nine-one-one with Gurnee. And one of the issues that we're facing is that if people realize that they may not have a job or they want a two-month vacation, we've had, how many have we lost already?
Three.
We've already lost three. And we're shorthanded right now for the telecommunications. So we've given an incentive for them to stay here so that we can get our calls out until they actually go over to Gurnee. And it basically provides that, this applies only to those full-time telecommunicator employees employed with the employer, which is us, at the date this agreement is executed. Any employees who leave prior to the final transfer shall not be entitled to any benefits described in this agreement except those that are provided to all employees under the current collective bargaining agreement. We are effectively terminating, we will be terminating their employment with the city and they will become Gurnee employees. So the following benefits were agreed to as part of that package, that they're not going to be our employees anymore. A one month of severance pay for any employee who accepts a new position with the Village of Gurnee. Three months of severance pay and six months of health insurance at no cost to any employee who does not accept the position with the Village of Gurnee. All vacation in compensatory time accrued but unused will be paid to all employees at the time of termination of employment with the City of Zion. All payouts will be at the employee's rate of pay at the time of termination of employment. Should collective bargaining, okay, there shall be no payout of unused sick leave to any employees. What we're trying to do is be fair to the people who work for us that are going out there and we're sensitive to what's happening to their livelihood. So that's what this is about. Do we, is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the severance agreement with telecommunications.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen.
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell.
Hi.
Commissioner McKinney.
Hi.
Mayor Hill.
Hi. Item eleven D is consider ESDA appointments for Mayor Hill. As you are aware, Brandon Bush has resigned his position as a director of the ESDA unit. Our present assistant director is Mr. David Ratliff. I am appointing him with the recommendation of the fire chief and the Commissioner of Police and Fire, pardon, excuse me, Public Safety. Mr. Ratliff will be the director of ESDA. And I would like to also appoint Mary Lou Hildebrandt as the assistant director. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen.
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell.
Hi.
Commissioner McKinney.
Hi.
Mayor Hill.
Hi. Item eleven E is consider two thousand seventeen Boyd Board and Commissions appointments per Mayor Hill. At this point, I would like to appoint to the Accident Review Board, BCL Town, Dane Costello. To the Electrical Commission, Richard Ianson, Merlin Kreis, John Lewis, Dave Geer, Pat Buchanan, John Hucker. Fire and Police Commission, Sean White. Jubilee Days Commission, Les Martin, Craig Budkovic, Brent Paxton, Mike Babekki. Liquor Control Commission, Nadine Thorne. Nostalgia Days, Gibby Buckholz, Rich Walker, Dave Nabel, Sonny Lea Bronson, Adam Miller, Randy Noor, and Mike Babekki. Planning and Zoning Commission, Madeline Santana. And the Police Pension Board, Mary Ann Carlton. Is there a motion to approve the appointments?
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen.
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell.
Hi.
Commissioner McKinney.
Hi.
Mayor Hill.
Hi. Item number twelve is departmental commentary. Do the department heads have anything they would like to share? Number thirteen is announcements. May twenty-ninth, the city offices will be closed for Memorial Day. June sixth at seven P.M., the Zion City Council meeting. June twentieth, six-thirty P.M., the Zion Township meeting. And seven P.M., Zion City Council meeting. And there's a Memorial Day service on the twenty-ninth at ten A.M. at the Memorial Park on Boulevard. Item number fourteen is a closed session pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty slash two open meetings for the discussion of personnel, probable litigation, and pending litigation. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen.
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Mr. McDowell.
Hi.
Mr. McKinney.
Hi. Hi.
Mayor Hill.
Hi. We will be coming back in session. There are some items that need to be acted on after the closed session. So all the board of governors, stick around.